It was great.
Yeah, okay. We got four. I'll come again.
Where you want to go?
This one right here.
Oh, there you go.
Ready to go. Oh, okay.
That's okay.
Say, sir. You don't leave.
I'm, I'm, I'm safe from maybe.
You're constituent.
He's the one and one A.
The one A.
Good to see you.
We're going back to the bridge. You know, say it's supposed to. The bridge. Yeah, we had the other. I thought the telephone was ringing. I don't know if I can hear you.
You will go ahead and take your seat as soon as you're going to sit down.
I am sitting down.
And we'd like to go ahead and call the council meeting to order November the sixth, two thousand and fourteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for all that are here tonight. We thank you for this opportunity to gather and discuss our city and see if we can come up with some better solutions for each and every citizen that are here. All these things we pray in your name.
Sure, they'd like to welcome all our guests and visitors tonight, some of which we will, we'll be recognizing. No more detail, very shortly. Out of any swaying in and give the elected council member, we would have known, but we will not have that tonight. There will be a recount, as I understand it, sometime in the next few days. And once, once those ballots and the outcome has been certified, then we will have a swearing in ceremony scheduled at that point. Okay? I have the Community Policing Partnership Awards to Jonas Van Kitz and Brett Rickles, Chief Director.
I hope I read that. We, I personally talked to both of the individuals and they, and this, this is Mr. Rickles? Okay, good. Glad you could. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and council members and citizens here, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to get up in front of you tonight to recognize a couple of citizens for their contributions to the Canton Police Department. On November twenty-second of two thousand and thirteen, we had a violent robbery at Cartersville Jewelry Store in the Walmart Shopping Center off of Ryan Riverstone Boulevard. And when the perpetrators left the business, they had gone in, they smashed the display case, and they took approximately fifty thousand dollars in jewelry from the business. And when the perpetrators left the business, Mr. Van Kitz actually saw them leaving, became suspicious, so to promote the GoPro, he turns on his GoPro and decides he's going to follow the individuals in a pickup truck as they left the parking lot. And I'd like to add that the pickup truck, we later found out, was actually taken in a carjacking in Atlanta from some residents from the state of Florida. So we had a stolen pickup truck, a robbery, they were armed, they left. Mr. Van Kitz actually followed the suspect vehicle, relayed information to the nine-one-one center, continued to videotape the individuals. They went on to five-seventy-five southbound, they got off at exit fourteen, and when they got off at exit fourteen, they made an immediate left-hand turn in one of the residential streets and went down there, and he, he lost sight of them from there. The individuals eventually came out of the neighborhood where Mr. Rickles saw the individuals discard some clothing from the vehicle. So when he saw Cherokee County Sheriff's Deputy, he pointed out the clothing, we had perimeters, we had a lot of officers out there searching for these individuals, because again, it was a very violent robbery that they had committed in our city. And we're not subject to these types of robbery, I like to point out. But the, the clothing was eventually sent to the crime lab. Shortly thereafter, a few months later, we actually had a resident call and said that they had found a handgun, which we believed to be used in that robbery. All of that clothing and the guns were sent to the crime lab. Georgia Bureau of Investigation, actually, GBI's Crime Lab actually did the processing. And I'd like to thank Assistant Chief Mark Mitchell, because he made a couple of phone calls to make sure that our evidence got placed in the higher priority list up there. We were able to actually identify one of the perpetrators. He was in jail. We had to get a confirmation DNA sample, because in this day and age, they want to make sure that we have the right individual. So from the clothing, we actually identified one of the perpetrators, got a confirmation DNA sample, it came back as confirmed, that individual was charged with armed robbery. We have a tentative match on the second individual from some DNA taken off the weapon, and I believe also the clothing. But without these individuals' assistance, pointing out the clothing, following and giving us the information of where they were, we more than likely would not have been able to solve this case. So on behalf of all of the members of the Canton Police Department, as well as the City Council and the citizens of this great city, I'd like to present them with a Community Policing Partnership Award. Stew it upon you, and it says, well, it says the same, so I'll read it off to you. It said, "Mr. John Van Kitz and Mr. Brett Rickles, for assisting the Canton Police Department with information critical to solving the November twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, armed robbery of the Cartersville Jewelry Store located in the Walmart Shopping Center. Your involvement led to the positive identification of the individuals responsible for committing this violent crime. Our city, agency, and community are forever grateful." Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, the council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you guys very much. I would like, if possible, for those, those who are here from the Action Church, Pastor Gary Lamb, they know this, if you would, come, come, come to the front of the. You would, I'm, I'm going to read a couple of things, and then we'll, we'll do something else, but. Back a year or so ago, a couple of years ago, we had a warming shelter out just up on Highway one forty past the Chevron Station there. Wasn't the best conditions, but it was a place where people could get in during some of the very, very cold weather that we subject to have. And that actually ended up shutting down, and we didn't have a warming shelter. Gary Lamb and Action Church stepped up to a table and, and offered to use their church out here on Marietta Road as a warming shelter and a place for people to get a, a meal all winter long. And they have, again, agreed, as I understand, to do, to do that again this year. The City of Canton is very appreciative of them doing that. It's my understanding from some of the numbers we have here that they gave away almost five tons of food, ten thousand articles of clothing, and also served hot meals to approximately thirty-five hundred people. Only that, that's a contribution. They have also mustered up and raised from, obviously, a lot of, a lot of hard work, some over sixteen thousand dollars in preparation for this year's winter warming center. So we want, we want to, we thank them for all they do in the community. Additionally, I, I understand that they have been recognized for supplying children with needed school supplies, clothes, haircuts, all last year before school started, getting kids ready for school. So they have, they have really been an asset to our community, and we'd like to express our appreciation to them. I'd like to present this proclamation, this proclamation, at least a statement of our appreciation for what, for what y'all have done to our community, in our community. Whereas Lead Pastor Gary Lamb and Action Church have opened their doors at two-seventy-one Marietta Road in Canton to those in need of shelter from the cold. And whereas Action Church, which will be three years old on the first Sunday of December, has approximately three hundred people attending services on Sundays and forty-five hundred people who call Action Church their home. And last year, Action Church gave away approximately five tons of food, ten thousand articles of clothing, and served a hot meal to approximately thirty-five hundred people. With the support of the City of Canton, last year, Action Church had approximately nine hundred people come through their warming shelter. And whereas, with the help of local churches and businesses, Lead Pastor Gary Lamb and Action Church have provided warm shelter, hot meals, and warm clothes to those who would otherwise be forced to brave cold weather on their own. Now therefore, I, Gene Hotgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, Georgia, I proclaim to hereby recognize and appreciate the efforts of Lead Pastor Gary Lamb and Action Church for their service, commitment, and dedication to helping families in need and homelessness and homeless people in Canton. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have changes, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to add under Old Business as nine H, a change order to the Old Canyon Fire Station site. Chief Floyd's here, and he'll be able to answer questions on that particular change order.
Okay. Mr. Good?
Yes, I'd like to add, you know, I'm serving the stage and sound system for the Christmas parade.
Sound system and, and stage?
Yes.
Stage, Christmas parade. Okay, that will be item H, yeah, item ten H. Okay, on the second page there, is that okay? Okay. Any other changes?
What, I had item under council, introduced items for update on the fire services meeting and notification for the meeting with the county commissioners.
Okay. That, that will be under, uh, number twelve. Councilor just announced. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as men?
No.
At second. Okay. All those in favor, signify as saying aye. Aye, opposed, nope. All members ready for the motion? You also have in your agenda package the minutes of October the sixteenth, council meeting, and also the public hearing meetings of October the sixteenth. Do we have any corrections or changes to those minutes? Mr. McGriff?
The meeting minutes, page four, item eleven, it says there were four A's, four yeses, four, uh, zero nos, for the motion. I voted no.
Which one was on it?
Number eleven.
Page four?
Page four, number eleven.
Okay.
So then the count is three, one, because I think there was only four of us here.
Yes, you did, I remember that guy. So, so that should have been three ayes and one nay?
Correct.
With Miss McGriff voting no. Were there any other corrections?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Trying to see where I've, check my notes. Did we, did we agree on the tab fee amount under number seven?
I don't, I don't think we did, so I think it's in there.
We asked the city manager to come up with more data.
Right. Which is why he brought back this meeting, which is in our package here.
But we did not agree, that's a, that's not.
Definitely, no.
It says, it says we're approved.
It should be strong. Which it should be, we discussed.
I think the motion was withdrawn, and it went on at two, bring back the tab fee, but I recall it.
Well, the minutes should just reflect no action taken.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what happened.
No action taken.
There wasn't even a motion to postpone it, it was just.
We just discussed it.
We don't.
Recommend it then, if the city manager brings the information back to us at this meeting. Okay. Any others? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes and the public hearing minutes as intended. Have the motion at second. Any other discussion? If those in favor signify as saying aye? Aye. Opposed, nope. Okay, all members ready for the motion?
I'm abstaining, because I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're voting for motion with the exception of Mr. Grant, who's not here. You also have in your agenda package there the financials for September, which is the last month of the last fiscal year. Are there any questions regarding those financials? Because these are for informational purposes. Okay. Now, we will move into our ten-minute public input period, and we have one individual, Mr. Thomas Weaver, who would like to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon, good evening. I want to be brief and go with the size of remarks that may tonight, so as not to influence legislative council's discussion or possible action on a pending resolution. That is the second item in the new business portion of the agenda. Tonight, as the court has, as the city determines, the council is scheduled to consider a resolution concerning the adoption of school safety zones, which I believe had been given to this council by the school board. And I would request that the council take the matter very seriously to reinforce public safety efforts. I hold in my hand a compilation of fifty school safety zones that I've compiled since August of all the schools in the county, depicting the actual buildings and properties that they own. And I wish to continue to follow the laws, the state of Georgia, and comport the regulations which have been provided to me by the legislature. And consistent with my obligations to do so, I, I request that this council, in considering that, that motion to adopt or to discuss that matter, to adopt those maps, which are consistent with the maps that have been provided to the public, so that the public can be afforded the notion to know as to where's the property start and stop. And I ask that this council only adopt maps that are consistent with the maps that have already been prepared by the district, so as not to have any discrepancies between the two.
Let me ask you, are you saying we got, there is a difference in what we have and what?
I, I don't know that for sure, but if there is, I would ask that this council, if there is, I don't know if there is, but if there is, I'd ask there not be any discrepancies. If there's not, then there's, then there should be an issue.
The maps we will be adopting will be provided by the school board.
Okay, then there shouldn't be any.
If that's what they say in public, then it's the same.
Okay, all right, if there is, then there was, I apologize, I didn't realize that was today. Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's any discrepancies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, appreciate it. Okay, under Old Business, so reports on the updates of any city, of the city goals, master plan, any, any report? At this point?
Well, I'll, I'll speak.
Okay.
Mr. Grant and I have met with Mr. Ken Patton, talked over the LCI supplemental grant application. We've edited, we've gotten a letter of support from the Arts Center, and moving forward with that grant.
Very good. Economic development. Mr. Huntman, do you, or Mr. Good, have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I don't, I'm going to, uh.
You may be here.
I put two of them together, and, and that Parks and Rec to be part of, because I look at Parks and Rec as a potential for economic development. And we all know that, I think, later on in the agenda, we'll ask the council to approve the acceptance of the, of the new park, which is ready for us to schedule some type of opening and leasing of the playgrounds. The ample theaters ready to be rented, to have whatever event would be there. The playing fields, we will not have any team sports there until, until the spring. The playground is a fantastic playground. Our County Parks and Rec person was over there, and he said, he says, "That is going to be rented every weekend for parties, because it's such a great playground." He says, "Probably the best in the county." So we might not realize what we got as far as starting to work on some economic development, which, as I said, I'm trying to put these two together as far as parks and recs. So we've got an asset coming on stream here. We also have a kayak and canoe launch there at the park, and the bridge is over and completed, except for the step up from the path that we will be building this, this fiscal year, Mr. Cummings? Mr. Cummings?
I assume that's, because I know we'll be doing the restudy on.
Okay.
The rest of the study.
That path will join the two parks, which when we bring these two parks together to make one fantastic park area, the, the people are going to come, in particular, when the spring comes with team sports going there. I'm getting it, bear with me. Jovi West and I have had, of course, every other Thursday morning meetings with the development of this park, but we have also started meeting with the County Parks and Rec Director, Ryan Reynolds, along with Mr. Jerry Cooper, the county manager. And I showed this last, last meeting, but it's an inventory of.
Sales system and, and stage.
Yes.
Stage Christmas parade. Okay, that will be item H, yeah, item 10H. Okay, on the second page there, is that okay?
Yeah.
Any other changes? Mr. Grant.
What, I had an item under council, introduced items for update on the fire services meeting and allocation for the meeting with the county commissioners.
Okay. That, that will be under, uh, number 12. Counselor just out. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as men?
No.
At second. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. All members voting for the motion. You also have in your agenda package, the minutes of October the 16th, council meeting, and also the public hearing meetings of October the 16th. Do we have any corrections or changes to those minutes? Mr. McGriff.
The meeting minutes, page four, item 11, it says there were four As, four yeses, four no's for the motion, I voted no.
Which one was on it? Let me find that. Item, page four?
Page four, number 11.
Okay.
So then the count is three, one, because I think there was only four of us here.
Yes, you did, so, so that should have been three ayes and one nay.
Correct.
With Mr. McGriff voting no. Were there any other corrections?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Trying to see where I've got my notes. Did we, did we agree on the tab fee amount under, uh, number seven?
I don't, I don't think we did, so I think it's in there.
We asked the city manager to come up with more data.
Right, which is why we brought back this meeting, which is in our package here.
But we did not agree, that's a, that's not.
Definitely, no.
It says, it says we're approved.
Should be struck. Which it should be, we discussed.
I think the motion was withdrawn and it went on at two, bring back the tab fee, but I recall it.
Well, the minutes should just reflect no action taken.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what happened.
No action taken.
There wasn't even a motion to postpone it, it was just.
We just discussed it.
We don't.
Recommend it then, if the city manager brings the information back to us at this meeting. Yeah. Any others? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes and the public hearing minutes as intended. Have the motion at second, any other discussion? If Congress in favor, signify by saying aye. No votes, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion.
I'm abstaining because I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Grant. Okay, who's not here. You also have in your agenda package there, the financials for September, which is the last month of the last fiscal year. Are there any questions regarding those financials? Because these are for informational purposes. Okay. Now, we will move into our 10-minute public input period, and we have one individual, Mr. Thomas Weaver, who would like to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon, good evening. I want to be brief and go with size and remarks that may tonight, so as not to influence legislative council's discussion or possible action on a pending resolution, that is the second item in the new business portion of the agenda. Tonight, as the court has the city concerns, the council is scheduled to consider a resolution concerning the adoption of school safety zones, which I believe had been given to this council by the school board. And I would request that the council take the matter very seriously to reinforce public safety efforts. I hold in my hand a compilation of 50 school safety zones that I've compiled since August of all the schools in the county, depicting the actual buildings and properties that they own, and I wish to continue to follow the laws, the state of Georgia, comport the regulations which have been provided to me by the legislature. And consistent with my obligations to do so, I, I request that this council, considering that, that motion to adopt or to discuss that matter, to adopt those maps which are consistent with the maps that have been provided to the public, so that the public can be afforded the notion to know as to where's the property start and stop. And I ask that this council only adopt maps that are consistent with the maps that have already been prepared by the district, so as not to have any discrepancies between the two.
Let me ask you, are you saying we got, there is a difference in what we have and what?
I, I don't know that for sure, but if there is, I would ask that this council, if there is, I don't know if there is, but if there is, I'd ask there not be any discrepancies. If there's not, then there's, then there should be an issue.
The maps we will be adopting will be provided by the school boards.
Okay, then there shouldn't be any.
If that's what they say in public, then it's the same.
Okay, all right, if there is, then there was, I apologize, I didn't realize that was today. I just wanted to make sure there's any discrepancies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, appreciate it. Okay, under old business, so reports on the updates of any city, of the city goals, master plan, any, any report? At this point.
Well, I'll, I'll speak.
Okay.
Mr. Grant and I have met with Mr. Ken Patton, talked over the LCI supplemental grant application. We've edited, we've gotten a letter of support from the Arts Center, and moving forward with that grant.
Very good. Economic development. Mr. Huffman, do you, or Mr. Goodwin have anything?
Well, I don't think, I'm gonna.
Thank you, maybe you're.
It is here. I put two of them together in, in that Parks and Rec to be part of, because I look at Parks and Rec as a potential for economic development. And we all know that, I think later on in the agenda, we'll ask the council to approve the acceptance of the, of the new park, which is ready for us to schedule some type of opening and leasing of the playgrounds, and the ample theaters ready to be rented, to have whatever event would be there. The playing fields, we will not have any team sports there until, until the spring. The playground is a fantastic playground. Our county Parks and Rec person was over there and he said, he says, "That is going to be rented every weekend for parties because it's such a great playground," he says, "probably the best in the county." So, we might not realize what we got as far as starting to work on some economic development, which, as I said, I'm trying to put these two together as far as parks and recs. So we've got a, an asset coming on stream here, we also have a kayak and canoe launch there at the park, and the bridge is over and completed, except for the step up from the path that we will be building this, this fiscal year, Mr. Cummings? Mr. Cummings?
I assume that's, because I know we'll be doing the restudy.
Okay.
The rest of the study.
That path will join the two parks, which when we bring these two parks together to make one fantastic park area, the, the people are going to come, particular when the spring comes with team sports going there. I'm getting it, bear with me. Jovi West and I have had, of course, every other Thursday morning meetings with the development of this park, but we have also started meeting with the county Parks and Recs director, Ryan Reynolds, along with Mr. Jerry Cooper, the county manager. And I showed this last, last meeting, but it's an inventory of our parks, and I think there's 12 parks that you, I don't know if y'all realize that, we got 12 parks. And on this list, we don't even have, which one are we missing, Mr. West?
Harmon Field.
Harmon Field is not even on here. So, they are recommending, and they have been very adamant about that, that we have enough in these parks to where, right now, we basically don't charge anything to use these parks. We don't do anything. If you go to the county, they're going to be charged. So, I'm going to recommend and put on the agenda for next year, our next meeting, that we do a budget amendment to hire a Parks and Rec director or manager. Because, excuse me, in meeting with Mr. Reynolds, and he going over the many things that has to be done in order to do it correctly, it is one heck of a job. And I think Mr. West had a, a meeting even as late as today with a gentleman with, who's he with, Jovi?
Cherokee Impact Soccer Organization.
Could you come up forward, please? He was talking about the size of this organization, and what they, it's enormous, and they're going to want time on the field, we're not going to give them 100%, that's for sure, but they're going to want time. Can you give us a little brief on your meeting with this gentleman?
Well, the guy basically has been emailing back and forth, kind of want to come in, introduce himself, get a face to face. He, he basically filled me in on his organization, that they currently have about 2,500 kids who play through Cherokee Impact Soccer, they have from elite teams, scheduled college showcases on them, you know, the people. And he basically, you know, asking about Bowling Park, what was any construction going to have for any of their use that they're, that they're currently using in the fields at Bowling Park, which was a, a good, it's a good move on his part, because we do actually have a strong ground in this company running for it, and I've asked a little bit of information on that, that I'll relay to him as soon as I can.
Tell, tell us a little bit about the requirements that he sees of a Parks director, what it takes in order to, to do what we are attempting to do.
Well, he's just mentioned a lot of information, and I just meant with the, we didn't get into a lot of the requirements for, say, a Parks director, but be an educated person in Parks and scheduling, and, you know, how to promote these programs, how to make, you know, make them run efficiently, I guess.
It's just so much more.
Making it's agreements, and so, there's a lot to it, as you said, and I, I can't load off the top of my head.
But anyhow, so I'm going to recommend that we start looking and hiring, in this fiscal year, a director or a manager to, to do this. In the meantime, hopefully, we will ask Brian Reynolds for his assistance in getting us up and running. Because there's, I thought I knew a little bit about it, but it didn't take me long to realize I don't. And I don't know who does, so we got to get some knowledge in there. Now, as far as economic development, this is going to bring a lot of people into our city. If we organize and do something with Bowling Park into Heritage Park, that's also going to bring revenue into our city. The, the playgrounds on the various parks, we need to have them cleaned and up to date, and they will be rented, I think he says they get $75 a day for a party at a park under, under the playgrounds.
One of the pavilions.
One of the pavilions, yes, absolutely. So, and then you talk about the leasing of the fields for practice and the leasing of the fields for, for games. It brings in quite a bit of revenue. Based on Mr. Reynolds, help me if I'm wrong here, please, Jovi, that about 40% of the cost of the fields, they got a $4.3 million operating budget, and the cost, the 40% of that is covered by fees, usage fees. So, that's almost $2 million, and that's the county. But you can see it's going to, it could be quite an operation, and I, so I'm going to ask that we do this, I'll have more at that time. But that's my report as far as Parks and Recs.
Let me get a little ancient history if I can.
Please.
It goes back, ancient, it goes back to.
Each.
Just so you know how the county got going and some of their recreation. And Mr. Dobbs will certainly remember that, I believe it was 19, I wasn't county commissioner at that, at that time, when, when, when this happened, but I believe it was '77 or '78 when they passed beer and wine sales in Cherokee County. While it wasn't included in the referendum, that the missionaries agreed, as I understand, that that money would be going, that 50% of that money would always go to recreation.
That's what he was saying, about half of their budgets was still through the alcohol tax.
Right, and that, that was what they agreed to, it wasn't in the referendum that mandated necessarily, but ever since that time, at least half of the beer and wine, most of the time, even more than that, went to recreation while we were getting, but I'm sure they're getting a lot more now, so. I thought that was kind of interesting, that, that, that he passed that at the time, you know, the referendum. Anyway.
Well, we might be able to find another source, so.
Well, I, I just did that.
Car rental tax.
Or wine.
The car rental fees.
Hey.
Hey.
Did we raise them a little bit? Okay, anything else for Topper?
No, thank you for your time.
Sir, I'm sorry.
One other thing that somebody might not know about, we, we hosted a, our first World Series about 20 years ago. I actually came to be a part of that, and the city of Canton hosted many World Series since then, and it brings in people from all over Tennessee and North Georgia and other, other states. And you're right, it does bring in a lot of revenue, hotels, restaurants, the whole gamut, and that's just for that, and then, of course, softball, baseball, you know, all different things, just things parks will be able to host. Soccer, big, big business soccer.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask for the council's opinion on whether we should have a soft opening, you might say, for that park to be used for?
Could, could we do that, is that not, is that?
I didn't add it, but.
Haven't we got another section on that?
Yeah, we've been discussing during maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, all right.
That's fine.
Okay, let's move, move along. Debt management, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, during the retreat, I was assigned the task of, actually, well, debt reduction, and I took the liberty to change the name to debt management, because we, every time we make a principal payment for, we're losing debt, so it's how we're managing our debt. And in your agenda package, you'll see under 9A, a complete handout. The two significant things that we have done is we have refinanced the 2005 and the 2009 series bonds, no new money, no extension in terms, in the term of payment. So it's the same number of payments, and it's the same amount of money as we had before, but took advantage of significantly reduced interest rates, it will have a cash flow impact of about $240,000 a year on this city. So, that's what we've done in terms of debt management in the recent year. The, in your package, you'll see there is a list of all of our debts, when, the amount of principal, the amount of interest, and each one of them is described, and I'll just open that up to Mr. Engel, who's here, if you have any questions about any of those, we can go into it, or you can review it, and we can discuss them at any time, but that's a complete package of the city's debt at our time.
Thank you, questions? Do we have any of them getting ready to roll off?
Yes, I believe we do, and.
The indicators getting low, isn't it?
The theater's about one year.
The golf course, no.
No, it's got.
No, I'm sorry, it's the theater one that's going to roll off. We'll have, this year, it will off.
Okay, anything else?
I just had one question. Glenn, is there any other bonds that we're looking to refinance? Because interest rates certainly aren't going to stay here forever, so.
Well, in bonds, I can't really answer that, we're looking at the bonds to see what's doable and what's not, but most bonds have what they call is a call feature, and those are staggered over periods of years, so we may have a negative by trying to refinance because we may be four or five years away from the callable option on that bond. The 2005 and the 2009 bonds were callable and did not create any penalties for calling them early, or paying major penalties, I should say, and the financial advantages were there. But I don't think there are any other ones, I think Mr. Engel could address that better than I. Are there any other bonds that we could?
Not within next year or two.
Not within the next year or two that we can refinance.
And just, the call feature really negates the savings on the interest on that, on that, you know, there's no savings there because you're getting a call penalty, you don't do it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, the good, the good news is that looking, going over this report, which is, I think, very well done, by the way, Mr. Cummings, I don't see anything with an interest rate exceeding 5%, everything's four over the, now, we had five plus on the reservoir, which took care of this year, this past year, so, you know, we're down into sub-fives in everything, which is not too bad.
And the ones we refinanced are in the 2.65 to 2.77% interest rate, so.
We, we're getting the debt down, and that's what we have to do, we're a whole lot better off than we were a few years ago, and it's, it's slowly getting down there. Okay, the next item, discussion of Georgia Waste System Waste Management Contract for Residential Solid Waste Collection, is this kind?
Yes, included in your package is a copy of that contract, we'll be asking at the voting session for a motion to approve your signing of that contract, which is included in your package.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
It's, it's a one-year contract with renewals, but the wording makes it sound like we have to agree, is the pricing good for all four years, or is it just, we got to negotiate a price again next year?
Well, it, it shows the price can go up according to the, the adjusted is what it says by the Consumer Price Index, CPI.
But what the, and that's different than what I'm asking, the, the contract says it's with an option to renew for three additional terms of one year upon mutual agreement by the parties. Does that mean if we go back and they say, "Well, we want to raise the price," they can do that?
With the CPI.
Well, I, maybe I'm not asking my question very clearly, is the price quoted good for four years or just one year?
Hey, just the night's year.
I guess it's one year.
Well, the consensus, the, the way I read it is the contract extended, the base rate charged by the contractor shall be adjusted for changes in Consumer Price Index each October 1st, beginning October 1st, 2015, so my interpretation is the price would increase only by the CPI.
We need to, we need to do a clarifying then on that, but.
Okay, so what's it go down?
Well, the mutual agreement part is what I think means either party can say, "I don't agree with that."
Okay.
If they can, if Waste Management can say, "We don't agree," even with the CPI, then that's what I wanted to know. What the intent was.
I'll bring that back with that clarifier, we can discuss that, bring it to that point.
I, I assume that the, that the agreement here is, is what we had discussed at the last couple of meetings there.
Yeah, it is, Mr. Knight is here, I believe, and he can address that if we wanted to.
If it is, it is, that's fine.
It's, it's the same contract we've been operating in there, they've just put in new terms. The contract otherwise is the same as we've had for four years.
If you would, would you email in the morning how you want that word in and all?
I, I, it really just, I just wanted to know what the intent was, if, if the intent was, we're going to sit down and negotiate the price every year, then that's fine, but if that's not what our intent was, we need to.
I don't think that was the intent, but I'll clarify that.
All right. I had one question.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I know it's a small item, but the roll-off site, it says under 4B for city front loading roll-off accounts, that's the commercial accounts, I would assume, not our roll-off site, is that correct? Something about that Exhibit C doesn't seem to correlate with the roll-off. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if, our roll-off site pricing is broken out in this contract as a separate item.
Canton Street Department, 440-yard roll-off containers?
Yeah, it would be there.
That's a hundred, what rate for all, 180, 1860?
What page is that, Jim?
Page nine.
Page nine, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's the one I'm looking at, yeah.
Last page. Canton Street Department is our roll-off site.
Okay, so it does break it up?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's something I like to look at, not, not so much from the cost that Waste Management has just, that the city charges the customers, that's something I look, I look at, mention.
Look at what?
Look at the costs, because I'd like it to be free, or, or as close to free as we can for residents, so we'll work on that later.
Got you. Item C and D, I'd like to take these two together, discussion of funding of blight reduction with excess insurance premium tax, and the discussion of $2 reduction in residential waste removal fees, which I think sort of go hand in hand there. As, as the council knows, the, the city manager at the last meeting, I guess it was, indicated, and I have those figures somewhere, that the insurance premium tax, which we get on an annual basis, was actually around $65,000 more than was anticipated and budgeted for in our FY15 budget. My position would be, feeling is that the council should at least consider utilizing that money and, and escrowing that money to begin the process of what we need to do, where we have to deal with blight as far as dilapidated buildings or something like that that we can't get done, we could use that money for that, and at the same time, we could show some good faith by reducing the garbage fee by $2 to our residential customers. So, it's sort of a win-win to me, you get both, you know, and I think, you know, when you tell the garbage customers, "We really don't need that for the garbage haul-in, so we'll reduce that down because we got other money." And then, and then, you know, maybe kind of see, that program is not, the program's going to take some time to get moving, I think, anyway, and get established, it's going to be a little more complex program than it might seem on the surface, I think, and it's going to take some time, and when you, when you deal with notifying owners, you are trying to find them, when you deal with then having, having your building people look at a building and see really what, what does it need, or does it need completely, to be completely removed, then, then you're going to have to get a contractor, and you're probably going to have to advertise for a contractor to take bids to, to get it taken care of. So it's going to be, there's going to be a pretty good procedure involved in this, so I think the, what I'm saying is, I think the $65,000 would be adequate for a while, for sure, you know, and there's also a, a possibility, in the Georgia Constitution, and I just asked our city manager to look at it, and I will get copies to all of you, former state representative Steve Stansell, who was in the legislature some years ago. Former State Representative Steve Stansell, who was in the legislature some years ago, was actually instrumental in helping to put this section in, which does allow some potential for the city to recoup some money, some cost involved, from the property owner by adjusting their tax rate higher than everyone else's tax rate if they have to go, the city has to go and do property. So, the city, and I think that's the reason it's in the Constitution, because normally, you know, normally everybody has to be charged on the same basis. But I put it in the Constitution, I think you can discriminate, so to speak, based on just what's there, you know? The fact that as a person, you've had to spend money to clean up a piece of property there. The only thing is, if they, if they come back and improve that property to meet standards, you say it doesn't meet standards in certain ways, okay? And you pay to get it fixed, then you can come back, you can raise the taxes in, but once, but eventually you may have to lower it back when they spend money to do that. But you never go more than breaking even with them. So, it's a little complicated, but it also has the potential of getting some of your money a little quicker than it would be, I think, if you just put a lien on the property. If you put a lien, only time you're gonna get that is with property sales, and some of it may not sell for years and years and years. I don't know. Anyway, it'd be worth looking at, I think, as a possible...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The exact amount is $59,265, if...
Okay.
On the insurance premium.
Roughly 60 grand?
Yes.
You know, just a rough estimate off the top of my head, my guess is that if we condemned a home and we were ready to take it down, my guess is they're probably gonna spend $5,000 to $10,000 to lower that, that's just a guess.
Re-look.
That cheap. Okay, let's just, for argument's sake, let's just say we do that. Could we raise the taxes enough to recoup that in two years or three years? You know, just kick the taxes?
I'm not sure what time I mean.
He said, he said it's a fairly simple process.
Right.
I sent it to you.
Maybe they're gonna ask me, but...
No, no.
There's a couple of... All we have to, our current ordinance has addressed all this. There are some issues about service and notice to certain kinds of owners who are companies, LLCs or corporations. So, we may have to do some changes on that to be able to certify certified mail, as opposed to try to get personal service on an entity. So, that's all we, but, and we have a nuisance process already that allows the city to remediate. It is not in compliance with state law, which you, Mr. Elliott, had forwarded you as a link to their code, which is the state law. So, we would just adopt the state law process of remediation. So, we need to do that anyway. Doesn't really have anything to do with any of the other issues you're talking about. We need to put that in place and have that weapon, which leads to the city being able to remediate in place of leaning on the property there.
Where would that be placed? In what document of ours do you say we need to put?
That ordinance?
It's an ordinance. No, we just changed our nuisance ordinance to adopt the state law procedures, which is what Mr. Elliott had done in order up. Many cities have done that. We just, Kent, it just never updated to the state law, which provide a whole lot more notice and due process. And that's all we're talking about. That's all we really have to change in the ordinances.
Okay. Bobby, I was just trying to slide you, but...
Well, I know, I just...
But he seemed to have a lot of experience with it, and I don't know how I ever got talking with him about it. I was in a meeting with him, I think, and he offered to help, so...
Bobby, you didn't really need to be kicking me under the table.
Of course.
Well, first of all, I've, I'm really pleased that we've gone through the various steps, the things that have to come together in order to make this work. And we're gonna ask that the county join in with us, which is another little bit of the, piece of the puzzle in order to make it work, because there are some pretty substantial properties on the entrances to our city, on 140 and on 20, that look very bad to our city with potential people coming up here to live. And I'm thinking about all the doctors, I was talking to Billy Hayes, the head guy over at the hospital, and he said they have a policy, I'm not sure if it was a policy, but he said he's gonna ask that all these physicians and high-paying jobs, that they reside in this community, not necessarily Canton, but in the community. And I would assume he's thinking Cherokee County would be the ball cover. Well, with these people coming up here to live... That one was very easy, and the people were very happy about paying to tear it down and had it trucked all the way for about $5,000, and it was very small. But I would like to take a minute, Mr. Mayor, because I have had, I've had more comments, emails, phone calls, stopping me on the street, the press has called, asking me questions about what we're trying to do. And I want to take a minute here to say a few things what it is not. The city has no interest in taking individuals' properties. That was one comment from one individual that has multiple properties, and I assure him that we have no interest, we don't wanna own the property at all. It's not necessarily for a family that has moved out, maybe been transferred, or whatever the situation may be, they haven't been able to sell their house, the house is in good shape, they wanna rent their house. We're not after that type of situation. So, I've been asked about that. It is not where the code enforcement officer is gonna get in the car and drive down the street and just start writing citations, much like what I would think some people might... If we did it. So, we're just aiming at property that just falls short of what it needs to be to be safe and not a nuisance, health-wise, that individuals living in there are not endangering kids because of unhealthy conditions. And we also, we're probably looking for, what it is, is to continue to look for areas that are blighted, of course, areas where there's too many people living in a house. That might be difficult, but we gotta try to do that. Unrentable, just because of the conditions of the house and it's vacant, generally an insurance company, Mr. Weatherby is in the house, he could probably vouch for this, insurance companies generally won't write a vacant house. If they do, it's gonna be out of sight as far as the premium. Just clean up the trash, there's so much trash laying around. And this is where I got the idea about using the $2 of trash, what we pay for trash, to use that to pay for the cleanup, because I think it goes hand-in-hand, I still do. But... Need to do, I'm fine with it. All I wanna do is get it cleaned up. So, with that said, I hope we can get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Gene, are we supposed to discuss both these items, C and D together?
Let's see.
That was the $2...
You mean...
I thought you, yeah, no, C and D, I thought you wanted to discuss them together.
Well, yeah, that's what we were discussing, basically.
Oh, 'cause I just, what do we wanna talk about on the $2 reduction? Are we gonna...
All I said was that those two items there, I just wanted the council to consider that. I mean, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory, basically, it's just that it would be a $2 reduction in residential fees from 1550 to 1450.
We're gonna bring that up for a vote next meeting?
And then we'll add the $60,000 as a budget amendment.
Right.
The only reason I'm asking is because we always have to consider that the $2 reduction, 70 cents of it, is really no longer part of the waste bank, the recycle... Cent plus a dollar thirty.
Right.
That's the only way to look at that, I think.
That's true.
I'm not disagreeing with him, it's just the numbers. Thank you.
Yes. Discussion of lill and vacant property registration, Mr. H...
No, that's, you wanna pull that off, Mr. Cummings?
Okay, okay. Hi, ma'am, discussion of water tap fees, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, in your packet you have 9F, this is a table. You got a discussion of comparison, you asked me to give you a comparison of water tap fees. Now, trying to keep those close as possible to apples, to apples, you'll see that it's by meter size of comparison of Canton to other areas. And you'll see in there also whether or not the meter's included in the cost, whether the back flows in it, whether the meter box, whether it includes installation. Now, there's one thing that doesn't show on here, because in our prior discussions, we talked about that a tap fee was assessed relative to the capacity provided. Well, we could look, for example, and compare Canton to Wood... They're buying wholesale water and reselling it. That's also true of Ball Ground, Waleska. Probably the best comparison in here would be the city of Cartersville to Canton. And that's probably the best comparison that you could come up. And it's interesting when you look at Cartersville, because they actually charge two fees. They charge a tap fee and a capacity fee. We just charge a single fee, which includes both of those. But anyway, that information's there, it's open to any kind of discussion, but that gives you complete comparison if you request it.
Captain?
Okay. Mr. Cummings, on the Canton, drop down to the 2-inch meter, or even further, go down to the 3-inch meter, we've got a cost of $9,500, but we've got, no, 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 no.
We don't provide the meter, we don't provide the backflow, we don't provide anything, we just charge a tap fee.
Okay, I understand.
And if you look at Cherokee County, they charge, they charge $17,000. In that case, they provide the meter, the backflow, the ball, and the installation.
I did 20 to 10, thank you.
You know, when you look at Carterville there, it looks like some very, very low amounts there, if I'm looking at that right. My guess is, you know, you can't always tell exactly what some of these means and what other items involve. If I'm not mistaken, Carterville has like, they may have electric and/or gas as well, utilities, and they well utilize some of those funds to offset some of the water costs. I don't know. But I'm pretty sure they have other utilities other than just the water and sewer, you know? Particularly, I think they're NiAG electric.
Well, they also have our user, which is a brewery. So, I mean, so I, you know, I mean, there, I think the point, Mr. Mayor, is that it's almost impossible to get apples to apples, so...
And you know, that's sort of, I agree, I certainly agree with that. And that's one of the reasons I tend to think we ought to be looking at maybe sort of patterning what we've got, consistent with the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, in that... Present a certain level of stability or uniformity in costs there. And they've been, they've been very successful in their, their water and sewer budgets, I know. Mr. Rusk?
I just noticed that, you know, is there any reason why the city of Carter, Cartersville doesn't even offer 10-inch tap fee? I mean, it's just not on there. I'm looking for the best comparison, you said it was Cartersville. They don't even offer one, it's not on here, right?
Well, we don't have a 10-inch in one either, with the same reason we don't.
Oh, okay, so...
I'm not sure what that is.
Why would anybody ever need a 10-inch anyway? What would be the...
Well, maybe about 5/10.
Well, no, I don't, I don't think we'll have a 10-inch tap, because none of those, they may not be above 6-inch. I'm not sure, if you're talking north of the hospital, because it's a 10-inch water main line, but the individual tap into the facility may not be above a 6 or an 8 at the maximum. So, the water main is 10 inches. Just 'cause the main is 10 inches doesn't mean that the tap into it is 10 inches.
What's that line?
Line in front of my house.
What's that line being tapped into, though? What's it connecting to that's not 10-inch? Okay. I mean, where's that, what's that line, AP2?
I guess I don't quite understand your question. For example, I may have an 8-inch line in front of my house, but my tap is only for quarter inch.
But that 8-inch line comes off of something else, or directly to the water plant. I guess, my question is, what's with that 10-inch? You wouldn't want a 10-inch tied into something smaller, would you?
Well, coming out of the 10-inch, the 10-inch feeds molding properties, that's your main. And now you're drawing out of that, but that doesn't mean you're necessarily making a 10-inch tap into that line.
But you may not be into that line, but if you put a 10-inch pipe somewhere, that's gonna connect to something.
That's the water main line, that'll probably, that'll be connected to a 10-inch line.
Okay, so that's a 10-inch tap.
Not if it's our line, it isn't.
They're putting them in.
The top of the street, there'll be a 10-inch coming off the main, though.
According to the UDC, any water main line along a private access is our line, if it's a water main. Now, the taps go into that. I think, I don't have the UDC with me. So, if they have a private access going into the hospital, and we actually got a loop system, we have an 8, they have an 8-inch line main going in, and also a 10-inch main going in. And along that private line, according to the UDC code, those main lines are our responsibility. Now, they'll tap in for different facilities. There could be the hospital, of course, and medical office buildings, and they'll tap into that water main that belongs to the city. They'll tap in possibly to the hospital, a 6-inch line.
Okay, let me ask a question, I'm a little bit slow on this now, so forgive me, but if we're not, if it's not gonna be a 10-inch tap that somebody has to pay for, why are we even caring whether it's a 10-inch fee or not?
Because originally, before we got the UDC passed, they would've taken and had to have a master meter at the front of the 10-inch meter, and they would've then had the responsibility, the question was whether they had responsibility for running that 10-inch all along their line.
But this came up after the UDC was passed, so why, why would we be, would we even be interested in a 10-inch tap fee?
Actually, it came up before we got into the UDC.
Okay, so do we just need to drop the fee for a 10-inch?
We don't really need a 10-inch at this current time, that's correct.
No more discussion.
One and a half inch, Mr. Cummings? The one and a half, it seems to be a big void in ours, isn't it? Any reason?
I have no idea why we don't have a one and a half inch tap.
Okay, let's move along, we've finished that, I think.
Trying to get apples to apples, well, I think you got some apple sauce in there.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Update on the Old Ball Ground Highway signs, Mr. Goodwin? You, Mr. Grant?
Mr. Grant and I met with, well, we met with someone, it must be a property owner over there, his building...
that's building, looking what he wants to do. Also, met with, I met with a current property owner of them. And he is wanting to, I think wanting a variance on his side of ten feet to be able to move it ten feet higher. That's S&amp;H Tire, just that he's been there a number of years before he was there, before Riverstone was there. And he feels he's being penalized by people not being able to see he's there or not know he's there. The building next door to him, Mr. Grant and I talked to the person who wants to buy that building. He looked all over the city. His building is being taken over by the new highway improvement over there at the Highway 20 and Oakdale area that's going to become, his parking lot's no longer going to be there, but he's going to have to move. He's looked all over. He thinks that's the best place. And what he's asking for is some sort of sign on the peak of his roof. Said, Bill, what, four by eight or a ten or something in that room, four feet high and along the ridge line so that you'd be able to see it somewhat from Riverstone Boulevard. But Mr. Grant had a good idea, I think, to look at a different type of that as well as another suggestion, maybe by making a business district. Really want to comment something on that?[698.54][698.54]- Yeah, it's, as we were looking, certainly the businesses, you know, in the center of Ball Ground Highway have different needs than the ones on the end of the highway there just because they're more visible. And the ones in the center are less visible. And S&amp;H Tire, for instance, wants to take their existing sign, which is not a huge sign, and just go up ten more feet. So, you know, our thought was is that each one of those businesses, as they occur, there are not a lot of businesses there, maybe it should be considered individual variances with some amount of understanding to work with them as much as possible, given that. Instead of, you know, carte blanche, let's put the Lord's down there. So, and then in addition to that, it's possibly utilizing maybe the sign banners on the streetlights on Riverstone Parkway or something and designing a few consistent banners that are well designed that says, "Old Ball Ground Business District, you know, left at light" or whatever, so people know that there are businesses located down there. Not advertising any individual businesses, but just letting people know that there are, you know, businesses down there. And that is the possibility. So, we maybe could draw up some recommendations for the next meeting just to consider. But it seems, I don't think it's a one, it didn't appear to us as like a one size fits all businesses down there. And there are not that many businesses down there, but there are several empty buildings down there. And it certainly is an area we hope with a future use map that will be used differently than it is now. But right now, the current businesses that are down there need some help. And the businesses that want to locate there, you know, are going to need some solutions. But it certainly seems like maybe that they maybe should consider, be considered as isolating cases, you know, in the interim.[827.37][827.37]- So, are you saying the recommendation might be to allow the elevation of sign higher than normal?[836.37][836.37]- Well, we said that maybe that the, that each of them should be considered, you know, applying for sign variance and under the consideration that these businesses have suffered because of what's happened there. Our understanding was that when Riverstone was built, that those property owners received no compensation for that, I think, from the DOT.[858.66][858.66]- Right.[859.66][859.66]- That's what I, in my understanding. And we'd be telling the variance board, you know, what to do, but it would just be our suggestion, you know, and given the like. Instead of creating a separate sign ordinances for that area, it seemed to be kind of in conflict from, you know, then there's another area where businesses sit, you know, certain amount of, you know, far off of Riverstone and say, hey, we, you know, we need to let people know, we need to raise our signs here also.[888.04][888.04]- One thing, you know, if you go along Riverstone and you look back at their signs, they're awfully, you know, they're big enough to see Riverstone Boulevard all the way to the end of the shopping center. And also, like, for instance, the Latimer sign down there, the gas station sign, those are huge signs that are visible because there's nothing in front of them. They're not asking to go up high, higher than Riverstone Boulevard and put that sign up. So, they're not asking for something that's totally crazy out of this. It's just, you know, they want to do something simple to be noticed. And I think it will also help that whole street grow and promote that area because there are several buildings down there that can be used. And I think it would be a success.[936.54][936.54]- It sounds reasonable. Very simple, really.[939.12][939.12]- Sounds reasonable.
The only thing that, what this would do is this would take that decision out of the complete hands of the council, right? And it would be, it would go before variance board, and that's a final decision. It doesn't come back here.[954.91][954.91]- Well, on those individual cases, which is how it happens, how sign variances happens now also. Okay. Mr. Rush, then I'll be back to you.[966.66][966.66]- Well, Jack mentioned a word that I'd like to use, and that's grow.
We want to help the businesses grow. The big problem that they have really is the fact that we have a line of trees that blocks the view. Recently, just in the last week or so, the city trimmed the trees from the bottom up. But guess what? If we put ten feet on it, he's going to be back in ten years. He's been there forty years and fifty years. He's going to come back and say, I need another ten feet because the trees are. We're either, maybe he's going to ask us to cut down the trees. And maybe we hate to see tree management on the basis of somebody's signs that he needs to have a sign be exposed to the public. I think, and when I worked on UDC with Ken for so long, one of the things that we were always trying to do is push people to do the monument signs. And if we had a monument sign on both ends of the entrance to Old Ball Ground, it seems to me, if properly done, that would do a great job for the -- I don't know why they wouldn't even agree to this, no matter what else we do. That's just one more benefit to get people to know the business, where the business is.[1035.33][1035.33]- Sure.[1037.66][1037.66]- The monument type signs that we have now don't work.
They work -- There's a garage that has had three different owners since we've been on this council and there, you know, and they moved and closed and had three different owners. And finally, they've actually moved up to where, next to the loft there because they could not get, make any vision. People, hit the red light, still not see it. And it's only like the fire dogs there, you know. It's, they're only this big. You've got to have a much bigger sign. You're not, when you're driving, you're watching the red, the road and the red lights and things of that nature. You're not looking for a --[1088.08][1088.08]- Those monument signs can be lit though, from behind.[1091.21][1091.21]- Yeah, but they just don't work. In fact --[1093.33][1093.33]- Well, you know, if there's no sign at all, that for sure doesn't work.
But, you know, a sign that, if there is a sign there, it works a little bit, a little bit better than nothing.[1101.47][1101.47]- Well, they moved out of those, all of those businesses farther up.
One guy said he just, he just wanted to get bid in, wrote the call, but nobody knew it was there.[1110.83][1110.83]- The suggestion that Mr. Grant had is create a solution, which we expect from Bill.
But, you know, the bottom line is that I hate to see banners go up on street signs because that just invites a whole bunch of people to do that. We've been fighting with one particular business that every Friday night they put out these wavy banners out there that can't get them taken down. Do we really, you know, that kind of, to me, is almost the same thing. You're really discriminating against that business versus the guy that has the right to put it on the poll.[1142.21][1142.21]- One other thing that Mr. Grant mentioned was, and I think this might be something
we could look at even more, is that we could actually put a sign across, you know, our, what do you call it, where the light pole is and have a little bar that goes out. Put a sign right there saying, you know, that the full bar is below.[1163.12][1163.12]- Yeah, that's what you were saying.[1166.83][1166.83]- With a directional, not a --
That would be good. Let's put the monuments up in exactly what Bill had just suggested, blue, doom, ball. Do everything. I really hate to see somebody spend money to put a sign up on the top of a barn and relocate because of that, and then we let our trees grow and we're going to keep blocking them. We're going to keep blocking S&amp;H and three, four -- trees grow fast down here. And you're going to block them again. That's the real, if those trees didn't exist, we wouldn't even be discussing this. Should we cut them down then? I don't know.[1211.47][1211.47]- Since they've cut the trees out, their businesses are a good bit more visible.
And I do believe if they move them up ten feet, I'm not sure if that's, if it's going to help. We need to ride by there and look at it because I go by there. You know, I'm up through there all the time. And then on the west side, down towards the loft, that's not a tree issue. It's just the, that's the way the land is. You're going to have the grayed land to, or you're going to have to put a sign so far up. Ridiculous to think about. I don't agree that these monument signs don't do the job because they're all over the place and they do do the job. They may not do it as well as some in some places, but I don't want to make a general statement that they don't do the job because that's, that's not quite adequate. The other thing that concerns me that's --[1273.04][1273.04]- This coming up?[1275.21][1275.21]- I think it's coming up. I heard rumor of it that might enter into this for, they'll be here asking for other variances. Did I not hear that QT is going to buy that little service station down there? QT's going in there? Mr. Patton, you see in the house?[1296.66][1296.66]- Yes, sir. Is QT thinking about doing something down there?[1302.47][1302.47]- They have some property under contract down along Old Ball Ground Road. I would suspect we're going to hear from them. So, we might want to consider that.[1314.71][1314.71]- Gene, I think, I think the showstopper for S&amp;H raising it ten feet might be this.
And I've asked that exact question to Ken Patton, is that they're going to have to change the footings and the whole structure of that sign. It's just not tacking on ten feet. That's a very, very expensive ordinance that would control the new height of that sign in terms of the safety measures. And if I was QT, I'd look at the fact that that might fall over on me someday if it wasn't properly done. I mean, it's a serious expensive proposition.[1346.77][1346.77]- Well, that's one, that's family something they're willing to want to deal with.
But my only question about monument signs would be, can you restrict those signs to only those businesses located down there? Or do you have to leave some first come, first served to whoever wants to do it? Like Reinhardt College Parkway or wherever, some of the, they've kind of complained about not being able to be, have, you know, I'll rest for try long Riverstone. Sometimes strangers don't know there's restaurants all up the Reinhardt College Parkway there. So, that would be my question is, can you, can you restrict it to those few businesses down there without opening it up to the --[1393.33][1393.33]- I know Ken can answer this question.
It's another subject we talked about because there's a limitation as to who can be on there and how many can be on there. For instance, it's like eight, eight businesses on the sign, on the monument. And so, the limitation is you can't expand beyond one eighth of that monument, which is usually four by eight. Ken, am I that on that or not? Or close?[1417.62][1417.62]- The monument sign copy area is thirty-two square feet. And what had been previously discussed in regards to monument signs for those businesses down there is that there would be a sanction added into the sign regulations for Old Ball Ground Road specific to those monument signs. Mr. Dyer and I had had a conversation in regards to us and things that he had seen in San Diego and some other areas with multiple monument signs along that area there as well. Part of the issue with the S&amp;H Tire sign is that that freestanding sign is a legal issue with S&amp;H Tires and that freestanding sign is the fact that it wasn't in compliance with the previous sign regulations and limited what could be done, that sort of thing. If city council is inclined to direct our office to accept a variance application, then that will move forward with the decision, borders honor and appeals, or city council can entertain an option. You can ask Mr. Dyer in regards to either of those.[1510.54][1510.54]- Ken, Ken ---- from San Diego and saw this sign. It was a monument sign, Bobby. I was pretty creative in terms of the way they --[1525.83][1525.83]- She was just, you know, a lot of clips there. We were talking about it, so I noticed the shopping center down the bottom, a very steep hill. They had a sign on the road that just said, hey, shopping center down here.[1538.66][1538.66]- They had a series of them along this highway.[1541.83][1541.83]- Advertising businesses that were down the road.[1543.54][1543.54]- Advertising businesses down the slopes. I've seen that. It called rather the front range section of Denver, which made allowance for deprecation with monument signage as well.[1561.12][1561.12]- The problem with, yeah, on Riverstone Parkway Boulevard, I never remember which one it is, is you got the guard rail. So, you have to get above the guard rail, along slope, and then you have a series of signs that say, maybe not like that.
Ultimately, what city council decides to do in regards to this issue. And to me, the simplest thing would be for them to allow them to get a variance. The uncertainty is whether or not the variance board would approve something like that. And if they didn't approve it, we're right back to square one. Right?[1609.91][1609.91]- If we, if we take up the task, then they don't have to deal with it.
Is that, that's --[1614.12][1614.12]- I don't know whether, if you consider the variance, I don't think we can take that task up.
I don't know if there's another term that we can --[1622.33][1622.33]- We have to change the ordinance to allow the city council to do it under certain circumstances. Legally, you could not.[1629.62][1629.62]- But, you know, we could always maybe hope.[1633.54][1633.54]- Ken, are you suggesting that we could have multiple monuments, like up the hill?
They're pointing down, enter at the next turn, whatever, to S&amp;H. So, you'll have maybe six monuments down Riverstone as opposed to one at each end?[1648.00][1648.00]- Oh, what, Mr. Dyer and I had discussions about having three, possibly four monument signs along that stretch. I believe that there's a fifteen or eighteen pieces of property that have frontage on Old Ball Ground Highway. So, anything that's done for any one of the businesses, you're going to have to look at providing that same in kind allowance for each of those properties.[1682.50][1682.50]- Now, these are signs that would be owned ---- put in the right of way is what you would be doing. Because if it just be a monument sign like that's across the street, just on the other side of the street, just saying S&amp;H Tire with an arrow. But, but we would have to allow it in the right of way.[1709.12][1709.12]- In my opinion, Mr. Mayor, council members, there's two ways to go about this in regards within that right of way. And if you recall, we did have a discussion year and a half, maybe two years ago in regards to this whole issue of the city, if you will, having signage and listing on renting space at locations that came out of all of this discussion with Old Ball Ground property. Information was presented through a city manager's office, came to city council, nothing ever happened. City council could certainly entertain and allow a sign easement within that section of road right of way and allow those private property interests to place a sign. An entrance sign in a median at the entrance of their subdivision within a dedicated road right of way, that is shown as a sign easement area.[1786.47][1786.47]- And that's generally approved though when the plan is --[1789.97][1789.97]- Yes, sir.[1791.33][1791.33]- As the way, we've got an example of where the monument signs are working. No big signs up on top of the building, and that's --
No big signs up on top of the building in that Canton marketplace. You drive by there, you see this roof, but you don't see big signs sticking up there. But you go up to the entrance, and you got Target, Lowe's, you got the signs right there.
I think the difference there is like the, you know, the scale of that.
With the scale of that, it make a difference, but...
I would like maybe suggest that Mr. Goodwin and I maybe sit down with Mr. Patton before the next meeting and talk about some options that we may bring back to Council to consider.
I just make one comment. Of all the thoughts we've had about this, Ken, I think where we always seem to be restricted, monument at either end. If you're suggesting... As you drive down Riverstone, and really might accomplish the objective for us, that's the best idea I've heard of for solving these people's problems. So if there's some way we can do this, you guys can meet with them and figure out a way to do this, and we can avoid having to go to a variance. It might be an advantage to get that done.
That's just one of the things Mr. Dyer and I had discussed last summer. He had seen some examples in San Diego. I've seen examples in Colorado, in Montana, in Nevada, Washington State, in similar type of situations. I've seen some of the things that Mr. Dyer has talked about in the San Diego area as well.
Okay. You two gonna get anything else on that? Thank you, Ken.
Explain the reasoning and the, I guess, timing on this particular change order. It's... I'll explain what it is, and it's a request for seven hundred and twenty tons of backfill stone for the retaining wall at the Canton Lowell Canyon Fire Station site in an amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
We recently had a company come out and test the soil around where the wall is going. As you know, we're putting a wall in between us and our property next door. The highest part of that wall is gonna be approximately nineteen feet. We had a company come up and test the dirt behind it, and I am not gonna tell, like I can tell you what the results were, other than the dirt did not work. I believe the problem was it was draining too fast. So we went and that dirt failed the test to be a backfill material behind our wall. They went down to the waste treatment plant, since there is excess dirt there, and we tested the dirt there to see if we could use that dirt. And it is actually, will not... It compact's too tight and will not drain it at all. So the only option we have now is to add the seven hundred plus... Have it mixed, and we'll have some excess foils, because we're not using all the dirt. It will actually be hauled off. And that is what the just under twenty-three thousand dollars is gonna be used for.
Sure?
Mixing sounds complicated, as I assume that's gonna make it cheaper, right?
Well, we're mixing it with dirt, so we're not having to use as much gravel. We're gonna mix...
Cheaper to mix it than to use all gravel.
How it's... Didn't they do a soil testing originally before...
Yes, sir. We actually done four bores on the site. But once we got down, we had to get down thirty feet to find out if the dirt would work. All that. The testing of the dirt that we done actually is something that is fairly new. The wall people that were using to build the wall said that is a requirement that went in approximately a year, year and a half ago. The bore that we done was done, I think, around four or five years ago.
How is this going to affect the construction of the building itself?
The wall is actually, we're not having an effect on the building itself.
No, but I mean, the soil, it's sort of some of the same soil, isn't it?
Yes, sir. We're gonna have six inches of gravel base, which we're over-designing for typically because of the weight of the trucks. There will be more monolithics, so we'll be dispersing the weight enough where it shouldn't be an issue. Plus, we're gonna be so close to the rock. Our site, when we hit rock, is just about a foot or two below where our building is actually finished, where elevation's gonna be. So we're gonna be actually sitting just above rock, if not on the rock, once we do the foundation footers.
Anyone else have a question?
Yes.
Approve this.
Second.
Have motion second. Any other discussion? It's gonna be the most expensive sign you've ever seen. I gotta tell you that, that one. All those in favor, signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. All members voted for the motion. Okay. Item under new business, discussion of fee waiver request for Oakdale Baptist Church. Mr. Cummins?
Yes. Oakdale Baptist Church is proposing an additional building. It's a fellowship hall, which would be connected to the church by a breezeway. They submitted an application for a variance... Thousand dollars. They've since reduced the size of the building, and it can be requested, the new size, under administrative variances, which is most likely to be approved. The fee for that administrative variance is two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars, and they're asking us to waive it since they've already paid a thousand for denied one. Recommendation of the city management is that we do waive the fee.
Is there a motion on that?
Yes.
We could make a motion or postpone it till next time.
Yeah, we can wait. We can wait on the next day.
This is not an emergency, right?
What's that?
This is not an emergency. It's just a...
God can wait. God can wait.
Yeah, the fires can't because... Sounds reasonable, man. All right, next item.
Part of the package of weapons laws that were passed, in order to prosecute for having a weapon on a school zone, they need to have an official map. So we're just being asked to... And the law says municipality would adopt the map. So the school board has provided us the maps and just asked that we adopt those.
Do these just cover the actual school properties and not...
It's supposed to be the boundaries now.
The property boundaries?
Property boundaries. The high school one actually excludes the new softball. That misses that softball. And I'm gonna mention that to the school board attorney. He was gonna make some changes and bring it back to us.
Okay. Mr. Russ?
Mr. Weaver so eloquently told us to be careful. I looked at the maps up there of the school zones, and those maps are really old. So I guess when we vote in two weeks, I just wanna be sure we're voting on the correct boundaries.
That's... Those are, they're just the areas. They're actually the tax parcels.
Those aren't really accurate, what we're gonna vote on.
They're as accurate as you can be without doing a survey.
Oh, okay.
So we just... Are the tax parcel referenced in the ordinance? I mean, should that be listed as to these are the tax parcels that are covered?
Maybe. This was the school board's request, so... This is how they presented it. If we're not comfortable with it, we go back to them and say we'd like to do it some other way, 'cause we're adopting the map. And I say it's the tax parcel. I may be wrong about that.
What we're adopting there, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's really that big a deal, but...
I mean, unless, well, unless we have some reason to think those boundaries are wrong. We could look at it on...
Oh, you mean like not in the city?
If we're not correct. I mean, if the boundaries are wrong, that would be the reason we wouldn't wanna adopt it.
You mean if they encompassed more than school property?
Or, right. We wouldn't worry about it to be less, right?
Yeah, as long as, you know...
We wouldn't wanna be incorrect. I mean, all of this is really, it's not the final word. It's prim facie, which means somebody can still come back and say, "Well, no, here's your deed. Here's a survey. You're wrong. I wasn't on school board property." It just allows, it takes away somebody just saying, "You have approved it." Basically, we're providing the proof on a prim facie basis.
And that has to be, the school board themselves can adopt it?
Correct.
That's interesting.
I think...
Well, we maintain it, is what it is. It's our map of the school board. And so if somebody's gonna prosecute, they would come get the clerk to certify this is the resolution we adopted here for that.
I think Mr. Weaver didn't say this, but I'm sure his whole purpose here is to be compliant with the law. He just wants to be very clear that we're adopting it correctly. So I'm only trying to be cautionary to make sure we do that. That's all.
And I understood his point was just to make sure we're not doing two different maps.
Right. I'm sure that's correct. Otherwise, you got fuzzy. You know, you got two lines. Two lines don't make it right. I think...
Okay, well, we'll know soon. That will be on our next agenda. The next item, discussion, considerations allow the community development department to vary from the overlay zone community standards for North Side Cherokee Boulevard, streetlights. Mr. Cummins?
And this is two parts, and the conditions of approval are somewhat ambiguous. In one place, it says compliance with the overlay zone community... zoning department could coordinate and approve variances. In talking with city attorney, he says city council could authorize the community development department to verify, or to vary from the overlay zone standards for streetlights, instead of requiring a ninety-day public hearing process. The particular situation is the streetlights along the Cherokee North Side, or North Side Cherokee Boulevard. They, the hospitals, you don't buy the, installs the lights, but we get the cost for the operations. And they have requested a variance in particular light poles to be utilized, which would save them money, but it would also... electrical costs. I have distributed to all of you a packet tonight that shows the different light poles and fixtures and the corresponding annual cost or monthly cost for lighting that boulevard. And so we'll be looking for a approval to allow the planning and zoning to authorize that variation in the next meeting.
Is it your understanding that the actual, the basic difference in...
Say that's the difference.
But you can't get LED bulbs on the poles that match one? It's already out there?
From my understanding, you can, but Mr. Patton, if he has other information on that, whether or not the LED can go on those other poles or not?
There are no LEDs that would be available for the lights that are contained within the overlay zone community standard. Pressure sodium that are really available for those types. There are cost savings with some other types of light fixtures. Our office has not had an opportunity to look into amendment to the overlay zone standards to bring to City Council in regards to options or alternatives, looking at the cost factor with what is specified.
I would think that whoever makes the ones that we got out there now probably gonna go out of business if the electrical cost is that much more than LED, wouldn't you? I mean, either that or they're out of date already. Maybe nobody would use them, I would think.
With a company that was out of Canada and a US light fixture company has purchased that company. Georgia Power does have a similar type of a light pole, if you will, but they don't have the teardrop lights, the cost on them as far as monthly electrical usage is more, according to Georgia Power and their reports.
Anyone else? Mr. Russ?
Yeah. Ken, does it, the cost savings for us per year, does that include the possibility that we'll save money because LEDs last a lot longer? Not only are they cheaper to run, but they last an awful lot longer than the other type?
They're supposed to last a lot longer, in my opinion. Jury's out on that based upon some experience I've seen here at City Hall recently.
Oh, in the chamber?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, some of them burned out before they were put in, almost, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Joel Green, if he's... He's still back there?
Yeah, he's sitting here.
Would he... Mr. Green, could you shed some light on this, on these bulbs?
No pun intended. I'd be happy to. I'm sure you want this at the time. I'm in the lighting business, and we specialize to some degree with streetlights. We, my name's Joel Green. I think most of you know me.
Oh, yeah.
We have a, we have a Cobra head that's been designed by, to take advantage of magnetic induction light, which was a technology dissolved by Nikola Tesla back in eighteen ninety-two. It's a technology that will last a hundred thousand hours. That's eleven point four years if you turn it on today for street lighting. Pretty much is gonna give you twenty-two years or more. It's maintenance-free. It has no bugs, no burns, no... Years. Never had a bulb change, never had a ballast change. Uses about fifty to seventy percent less electricity. Comes with a ten-year full warranty.
Is it LED?
No, it's magnetic induction. LED, we sell LEDs as well. LEDs typically are going to be only good on low wattage applications, typically replacing a hundred watt bulb, but it's not good for replacing a streetlight. The induction light is a pure white light. It's five thousand degrees Kelvin, and it's equivalent to daylight. So they can come in if the lighting lens high, it's red, or if it's obvious high, it's purple, pink, beige, taupe, whatever. It's always wanting to be in the right color. So ostensibly, if you had a person come in and commit a robbery, and that person goes before the judge, the defense attorney could say, "Well, what color shirt was he wearing?" And they could say, "Well, he was wearing a green shirt."
What type of... And one that the hospitals recommend, and the apparatus at the top are different?
Well, we can work with a shoebox, which would be typically a square, a square light, which you might find at Riverstone Parkway, Riverstone Shopping Center. Or we can work with a Cobra, which would be something that you might find on the highway. So I think we can probably accommodate whatever the needs are, and if not, we can do a retrofit. Does that answer your question?
I'm sure it does, but I just don't realize it.
Joel, how much longer might it last compared to LED? And how much cheaper is it? And how much cheaper is it?
Well, typically, it's going to be 25 to 30% less expensive than an LED. It will last twice as long, pretty much guaranteed. LEDs are coming out with a theoretical 50,000, 50,000-hour life. Our light has been proven by the US Department of Energy to last for 100,000. What they did was they, they took a waste, a waste that, the, the US Waste Center in Mexico, they took 36 lights, they put them up on a pole, they turned them on, left them on for 10 straight years. That's eight to $7,600. Of those, 33 were producing greater than 90% of the original lumen output, meaning it's, after 10 years, they were almost like brand new.
Well.
You didn't, you didn't, you didn't.
But you gotta understand, we are not buying light bulbs or the light fixtures.
I understand that, but you know, it seems like.
But we can put them in touch, but my.
Yeah, we can put them in touch with Northside, and Northside can then deal with it.
My question is, Mr. Green, is that those bulbs are usually, on the front end, more expensive. With that assumption, who buys the bulb? Is Northside, or we buy the bulb?
Northside buys. The only cons.
If I may, just, you're competing against, we compete against metal halides, high pressure sodiums, LEDs typically. The light cycle on a metal halide is typically 75, 7,500 to 10,000 hours. Our lamp, our lamps will last 100,000 hours. Against a high pressure sodium, they tend to run 15 to 24,000 hours. Those are the orange bulbs, the yellow bulbs that you might see on, on these. Our lights will be more expensive to buy, but typically, the payback is done, is achieved in about a two-year period of time, with a 22-year life expectancy. So, when we go into a situation, and it is based on the amount of usage, it's based on the amount of money we're paying for the cost of electricity. The city camp has made them, what, 52 different contracts? 52 different bills for the 200 lights you own in the city?
With the law. I'm not sure of the exact numbers.
Georgia Power has some very weird pricings there with the setup with the city.
I understand made in the first place, because although they're putting it in, we're the ones stuck with 30 to 50 years of paying the light bill. I mean, I, you know, yeah, initially, they got the big number, but you know what, long-term, we got a much bigger number.
They, they, they understand what they're asking. We have, we already tell them what the light fixtures are.
We already have a standard.
We have a standard. They're asking us to vary the standards, to be cheaper.
To be cheaper for us.
Well, and for them.
Yeah, but the benefit is that we would be.
We can get a lot cheaper right there.
Well, but again, I don't know whether it's a lot cheaper for Northside, and they may not want that solution, so.
That's why I just said we're like the people.
Well, all they're asking is, will you vary the standards? That's really all you have to decide at their request. You could say no.
That is correct, Mr. Dyer, that is what is before. step with that specified street light and type of lamps that are in our overlay zone standards. One thing that I would add is that although Northside will purchase and install the light holes, the lamps, if you will, and all of that, all of that will go towards road impact feet credits under state law. Those street lights are part of a system improvement for their.
Well, they just have more road credits left. They'll have more credits left to use someplace else. That's a demonstrative. But here, our situation is real simple. In two weeks, we say no, call Joel.
Well, cheapest, we, we don't, it's cheapest. Okay. Well. This is something to think about, and maybe raise questions. If you have any, any questions between now and the next meeting, just pick up the phone, call Ken, and then we will, we'll try to make a decision on this. Basically, we have a set standard, they're asking us to vary from that standard.
Yep.
Is there, is there a reason that, is there a reason that that's not considered by the zoning variance board?
Well, there's ambiguous language within one of the conditions of zone approval that run for Kent place. Within the same condition that states that overlay zone. street light and sidewalk plan will be submitted and coordinated and approved by planning and zoning departments. It's sort of advantageous, that's the reason I'm here trying to get guys to sit down.
The, the choice, the choice was letting the department just decide, or bringing it to city council. We may regret bringing it to city council, but.
They may regret.
Would it go to the zone, the appeals board for a variance?
No, because the department has the ability to approve any plans. That, that's what we're talking about, the zoning conditions allow the planning and zoning department to approve the plans.
There's ambiguous language, and it's a.
It's not really a variance.
It really, it's either going to be a public hearing process, uh, as others' district commission, or back to all the city council for a final decision, as an amendment to that condition is on an approval, or allow the staff under that sentence.
Could have allowed Ken to make that decision, and then argued that it says it's allowable to be done, but then somebody would have said, well, just before that, it says it has to go to planning commission. That's the reason we brought it to council. We need the guidance of council to tell us, do you want planning and zoning to be able to make the variance decision in this case? Or, do you want to take it on a, well, this would be a case-by-case basis? Or, do you want us to then say, we must stick to the standards? The advantages of allowing the variance to the city are operating costs, there are also advantages to Northside in that they're saving money in the cost of the. There are other options for the lighting fixtures, that would have to be presented to Northside. Northside would have to buy off on it, come back to us, and ask us for a variance for the use of that substituted one. So, it's not us saying we want to use a different one, because Northside could say, we don't want that one, we'll go back to what the standard currently is. Please go address Northside, if Northside is open to that, and wants to come to us and, and show us that it's, it's favorable to everybody's benefit, both the city in terms of operating cost, and them in terms of capital expenditure, then we could look at that variance as such. But we can't really say to Northside, we want you to take a variance, and this is the variance we want you to take. They would say possibly, we want to stick to the standard that's in existence.
Ask Mr. Patton a question. In your opinion, the current streetlights we have in our, that we require in our, in our. Respecify.
It depends upon location, and what the use of the roadway is, in my opinion. These same types of lights are installed throughout the downtown area, along East Main Street. Out at Simpler's Kent Marketplace, they installed a taller lamp post that is identical to these smaller pedestrian-style that have been put in along Waleska Street, Railroad Street, East Main Street. But it's very similar with that teardrop look in effect. And with other technologies coming on board, looking at long-term operation, maintenance costs, things of that nature, I think it would, it would send you to look at options, if you will.
in mind if, if we maybe should be reviewing those, I mean, shouldn't we be reviewing that's the city, and maybe making suggestions to Northside, something that's going to fit our needs going forward versus?
Which seemed reasonable to me. I mean, I think, you know, I think if we've got these certain, certain lights in there as a specification, then, you know, maybe, maybe we need to change that. That would be consistent and more workable for both us and, and the development.
Can I ask Glenn a question? Glenn, when, when, when is, when do they need an answer? I mean, are they going to order these lights, or when do they need an answer from us?
I mean, they're supposed to be when they finish the street.
Oh, okay.
So, they haven't, there's no sidewalks either, they got to put sidewalks in, that case. So, they, what you got, you've got part of that boulevard with one type of streetlights, and then you'd suddenly have a break and, and have a different, the rest of it would be a different.
Especially the light illumines from those lights might be a little different, too. That'd be weird, driving down the street, and all of a sudden brighter, lighter.
But you have different speed limits, I think, as well. That was one of the issues about the streetlights, is the cars are going 45 miles an hour through there.
And the other thing that our office staff had had a discussion with the Northside representative was that if there were going to be a change along this corridor, the bridge and the creek seems like a logical place, and separation, if you will. break, if you will, or boundary in existence with that bridge and the creek, that would seem like a logical break point, if you're going to have different types of light poles and different types of lamps.
So, from the bridge up to Kent Marketplace, that'd be the old style, and from that bridge on into the.
But that, that's what's been mentioned to Northside, they haven't come back and said yes or no.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes. What would behoove us is to have the lowest-cost fixture, because we're giving impact feet credits, and the lowest possible cost on operation of that, or operating cost power. And where one offsets the other, you do a payback analysis and determine the period of time in which it would take. You might spend more on a capital expenditure, because you've got significantly reduced costs on an operating basis, and you would then turn around and calculate in the amount of time that it would take to pay back the difference in the capital expenditure.
But you, but you do want something that looks good.
Ah, correct.
It's got, I mean, it'll look good, even if you have to pay a little bit more for it.
That's correct.
It should, in my opinion, be.
Well, it seems like we got a no-brainer, we got to go ahead with this, but it seems unfortunate that we.
Well, I don't know that we have to go ahead. I think what you, what you could do is, you could make, you could make the decision to allow planning and zoning to vary that light fixture, and we could then request Northside to consider Mr. Green's light, and let them move forward, and we look at the total financial impact, both on us from impact fee credits and operating costs. But. to vary, or give him the authority to vary, which is, in the language, is just ambiguous. And then, to cha, uh, charge us with looking at, and having Mr. Green present to Northside his option, and them coming back with what they think should be done, and we evaluate it from the total cost impact to the city. Okay, I think, I think we've kind of got the picture now, so, let's move on to the next item, and we'd like to be thinking.
Mr. Green wanted to make one additional comment.
Okay, sure.
I can hear this later, but basically, one of the things you're looking at is, you're talking about different lights. My, my standard line with ourselves, basically, the only people, only time people pay any attention to lighting is when it's out. You can go down the street and never look at the lights until there's one missing. One of the things that we have is relative to the total package of the price of a bulb and the lamp and the fixtures and the poles. You're spending $3,000 for a pole. Our lights are probably going to be maybe 1/8 of that, total combination. The fixtures that are there, we can retrofit, basically put in a $200 bulb and a ballast that will last you 22 years. So, basically, when you consider the cost of electricity, we use significantly less electricity. Ultimately, people buy lights for only one thing, and that's to see the visual effect of. On a sunny day, and looking at whatever you're looking at. You can read better, you can see better, it's much better than a metal halide, much better than high-pressure sodium, much better than an LED, because it's not calary.
Mr. Drew, what about the spread of the light?
You need to call me Joel. You need to call me Joel. In terms of the spread, in terms of the spread of the light, LEDs are very focused, it's a pointed light, so if you point it at the edge of the sidewalk, that's where it's going to stop. It's not going to light up the bushes, it's not going to light up anything else. Our light is somewhat of a, for lack of a better. quickly into it, you don't have, you don't have spots in front of your eyes. I, I will bring down a sample light to Kent tomorrow or the next day, and show them what we got. It's a very simple process, we've used it with the Indiana term light, we use it with the Senselain term light, Philadelphia's using them, any place where they put them up, they light the light, because it's, people can see that. The economics are such that, we, we don't sell LEDs, we sell light, that's what comes down.
Next item, discussion of the T-Mobile request.
That is 10D. T-Mobile is asked to expand. amendment to expand the number of, I guess, receivers at the top of the cell tower.
Do, does that generate any more money for us?
No.
It does for them, though, right?
Yeah, but they have a, the contract we have has a, has a five-year, I believe, contract, that's renewable, why, how it got to be five years, I don't know, because we usually do one year. goes up 15%, and I believe that this was put in in anticipation of the expansion of the, you know, that, or the inflationary cost. But, like, for example, the first renewal term went to 27, 20,700, and I don't know which term we're in right now, then it goes to 23,000, 27,000, 31,000, and for the fourth year.
But did, did that agreement, I mean, I'm not sure, did it limit the number of antennas, or did it say how many they can have?
I don't believe that there's any limit in here as to the number of antennas.
I think we sort of have to agree, they just should do it informally, but we'll.
There's, there's, if we deny. There's, if we deny it, I know there's federal reporting or requesting requirements with federal communications. Is there not, Bobby? Do we have to...
It's been a while since I've looked at that.
If we have no choice, why do we discuss anything? We have to approve it.
Well, it's a change to the contract and it's an amendment to the law.
We don't have any choice. We have to approve it.
Well, no, we could deny it, but I think we have to go through a lot of paperwork justifying the reasons why we've denied it.
Could we change the fee?
I don't... Bobby, I have to answer the question on legality of changing fees.
Will you go through that and look at that and see?
Did you comment changing the fee was changed for doing this?
Because they're adding more to that. Antennas in was covered in the original...
We got it or do you want...
I don't have it.
They're getting paid more for every antenna that's taken on that.
So before we vote our obligatory yay on everything, we just link into moments whether we could charge them or not, right?
Yeah, that's all. I just wanted to make the idea of that.
Did you know you shower up on Grand Towne Way? We got some lanes up there.
Yeah. Especially if we deny these extra antennas.
In regard to case Z1409-001, Jerry T. Henry requesting to rezone 2.52 acres located on West Lake View Drive from OI Office Institution to RA6, which is residential attached, six units per acre.
There was no attendance that spoke either for or against this request, so... And they recommended approval.
I drove by. Looks like that's the only thing you can be able to use that lane for. See if they can get some houses squeezed in there.
So it's not, there's no real office right in that neighborhood?
No. Okay. Never after that.
It's actually the backside of Oak Side Medical. But it's separated by creek.
Anybody have any questions on that one? Okay. Next item, discussion of the Edgewall Park Maintenance Proposal for Mr. Bennett.
Yes, two issues or two things on this. Significant compliance with the contract. I implemented a procedure internally that all department heads have signed off that the park is ready to accept and we're coming... I'm asking Council Number One to give me a go-ahead to sign that document that states that they have met the compliance. That'll be asked at the next meeting. And the second is to single-source the maintenance for the... The exact amount written down here. The reason for single sourcing it is we're giving it to the developer because the developer has a guarantee of one year on 11 acres, I think approximately 11 acres of sod and all of the shrubs and trees that are planted there, and they warrant them for one year. And our thought behind the process of giving to them the maintenance for one year is that at the end of that year, if there's anything wrong with that park relative to landscaping, we don't have a developer who's warranted that the park pointing at the maintenance of the park and the maintenance pointing to the developer because it'd be both one and the same. It's that sod has been extremely expensive. I think it was upwards of, what, $300,000 or $400,000?
I don't know what the cost, final cost of the sod. I know it's 400,000, 400,000 square feet.
Yeah, and it's extremely expensive and the risk is extremely high of getting another maintenance company and getting into the issue of who's to blame with the sod or the landscaping isn't healthy at the end of the year. So we'll be asking for the approval of that same developer to maintain and warrant that park's landscaping for one year.
Is that one year from the date that it's taken over?
Yes.
Yes. So... Let me ask this. We've got winter coming on. We've got a sodded park that, quite honestly, you cannot utilize for at least a few months, I would assume. If we go ahead and implement a contract at $82,000 or $84,000, we're going to be paying for the maintenance that they're doing on that park if the trees die or if sod dies or whatever. If we don't accept it at this point, they're still going to be responsible under their old orders for the trees, the sod and all that. Now, we have a bridge there that doesn't go anywhere just yet, you know, and my feeling is it's going to be very, very difficult. I mean, you can open the park, I guess, allow people to walk on the concrete down there. But, I mean, you're going to have to keep them off of the bridge, I guess, or maybe they can walk up and look over, but... And I'm not sure, if you open it to the walking paths, I'm concerned, you're also... They're going to be out there on those fields. They're going to be out there, you're going to have soccer games going on right and left. I got to feel it. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, yes and no. They'll be walking on the bridge. No question on this park side, it's open to walk up and look down on the river, which is, for anybody who's here, it's nice to think you can look down on that river and think you're, don't realize you're right in the middle of Kent. But the other side is voided up. There's only a step down about like that and then you're good to go. But we do have boards across there to keep people... To have team sports probably is not the best thing to do right now. We could do it. We probably could do it, but I would feel better and I think the developer feel better is let the sod go ahead and have the winter off and go along with it. But, you know, the kids running out there, a few little kids, not going to hurt that side. That side's in pretty good right now.
I think also the answer, if there's a point where it's not our choice whether to accept it or not. I mean, when the job's done, it's done. And I think that's what they're saying.
We are there. We are there.
It's substantial compliance.
Substantial compliance.
But I understand that. But they still have got to maintain it, right?
They got a warrant for a year. But we don't get to, we don't, there's a point where we don't get to decide when that starts. Because that's why they have substantial compliance in these contracts is so that we don't say, okay, well, your warranty's going to start six months from now when we decide to take it. They're going to say it's already started if we don't...
So is it up to us or is it up to the county?
Well, the county's told us it's done.
Right. County's... All right, they got all their sign-offs and the architects signed off, the developers signed off, county's ready. They're looking actually to pick up a sign-off tomorrow. We accept it that it's ready to go.
So we have to vote on this tonight?
I would think so.
Well, here, let me, can I ask a few questions? First, you got a one-year agreement on a very sensitive, expensive process here and you don't want the finger to be pointed this way, you want the guy to point the finger right back at himself. He cannot blame the fact that some other sod maintenance guy screwed up and as a result, he's not going to be held liable for it. My question is this, the supply of sod was a big, big issue for us here. Has the supply of sod changed? For instance, if there is a failure, are we going to wait another six months to have that sod replaced? Or is, do you know?
No, we might have some sod and replace it.
I wasn't asking you. Okay. But do you know?
Well, naturally, you're not going to put the sod down in wintertime because it's not going to take root. So if sod dies between now and the spring growing season, it won't be replaced until the spring comes. Because it's not going to take root at this point in time.
Has the supply loosened up a little bit?
I don't know because right now, nobody plants that now because it's in the dormant season.
I think the one thing we should do is ask the supplier, the guy who put the sod in, about the use of the sod for anybody playing frisbee with their son or walking on it or whatever. Do we want to put up sod and stay off the grass until spring or whatever? Because he's the guy that's going to be responsible if there's a failure. So let's listen to him. What he says to do is exactly what we're going to do because we don't want to fail on our part keeping people, letting people on there and then you'll say, hey, you guys didn't control the population. Your fault. That's why you could blame us.
Well, that becomes us to decide the usage and the control of the usage of the park. Question now is whether we accept the park. And secondly, do we single-source the maintenance of that park? Now, in discussions with the mayor, if you do wait till spring, my suggestion then would be that the... And you really want it to run for approximately October already that we're into November. From October to the end of September. And the reason behind that is, is the chemical treatment of sod begins in the October timeframe when you start doing pre-emergence. And if you change contractors in the middle of that season, what you will experience is, especially if you're throwing a contractor out, is that he will cut back on his last treatments. You won't know it until spring when you got weeds all over the place. So if you wait to spring, we should then go with an 18-month contract to ensure that we're in the total October to September cycle.
Johnny, if you do wait to... And they're also responsible for sod, the trees, the shrubs and all that. They're going to put out all that pre-emergent, they're going to put out all that stuff and fertilizer. They're going to keep it in good shape, but it's not going to be on our contract for the $84,000. That was what I was trying to say.
But here, you've got to remember one thing. They've already maintained that sod for three months to get it ready to turn over, correct? I mean, so we really already have...
Behind that turning it over, yeah.
They got a year from the time it's turned over, from what I was saying.
We really would have, if we only did one year, we'd really have the same guy for 15 months, 16 months, right?
Right.
Yeah. The easy thing is if we have to decide to accept it, we vote to accept it tonight and then we put it on the agenda for the single source next two weeks.
I think they got to go hand to hand.
Do you want to do both tonight?
I think that's what they're asking for, is that they want this, it's done.
He wants a single-source vote.
I understand that. If you vote one, I think you got to vote the other because otherwise, we're sitting there where you vote the acceptance of the park and I don't have, you know, from the city management's point of view, I don't have anybody maintaining that park and then we're exposed.
You haven't bid it out? You haven't done a...
Not only that, they're doing some other things. They're doing the planting of the flowers, they're doing the pine straw, they're doing the mulching, they're cleaning the playground, they're cleaning the sidewalks and the parking lots, picking up the trash cans out of the trash. It's, when I say maintenance, it's the entire maintenance of that park. Cleaning the concession stand, they're doing the whole thing.
You think it's one of them or one of them?
I was going to say, I think it makes sense to me, the single source contract, it makes sense to me. It seems reasonable for that amount of land. However, we just got this when we came in tonight, so I haven't had a chance to read through it.
That's the contract. You have in your agenda packet, you have in agenda packet the entire proposal.
Right, right.
So that should be had a week.
Yeah, but the contract, I mean...
The contract is the formality of the proposals that you got in your agenda packet.
It sounds good to me, it just seems like two weeks is not going to hurt anything at this point.
On the contract, it probably won't hurt anything at this point. But as far as the handover to the county, that needs to be voted on tonight.
But that went on the agenda, was it?
Sign off their certificate that's passing around? Mr. West?
That was combined within the...
What is the document we're looking forward to have ready?
Substantial completion.
Substantial completion.
Do you not have that?
We have on the agenda the...
Agenda discussion of the park maintenance proposal. Not whether we accept it or not, I guess.
Part of the real issue here is, I might just add one thing. It's about the body capacity of Georgia Department of Farmers. Tied up that limit being, they were bid on those projects. That's usually what this, it's the lead game. That's what's been stressed to me.
Do you think two weeks should make a big difference?
No, I'm talking, I don't think so on that part, but maybe until March it might.
But I know Mr. West has been taking...
We're not talking about doing that, okay? What we're talking about is delaying the start of the maintenance contract at that point.
At what point, Joy, if you accept the park, you...
So we're...
That's my whole point, was aren't they going to maintain it? They're responsible for it and they know...
They're not going to cut the grass. They're...
They have no grass growing between now and March.
They're going to be maintenance things that need to be done that won't be done between now and March.
So you don't think if they know they got to meet the details of this contract with pre-emergence, post-emergence, fertilizers, everything in the world, that they're going to let it go between right now and March and then...
No, 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 no. You think they're going to do afraid?
They're not going to do any work between now and March if they're not getting paid for it.
But they're going to do work between now and March.
For what?
Clean. They're going to clean that park.
If you don't sign the contract.
Well, of course. But I was saying, somebody said two weeks. The park can sit there for two weeks, about three months.
I don't think they're going to do any maintenance work under a warranty.
But aren't...
You could decide that there's no maintenance work needed, that's a fair decision. But to expect them to do it without a contract is not...
I'm not expecting them to follow the letter of this thing here. I would expect that they would keep it in good shape between now and then because they're responsible for it.
But that's getting to the whole, the whole point of the reasoning behind making them do... That's not installation, that's not anything because there was no maintenance.
Maintenance is not going to warrant your time. You buy a new truck...
What's the maintenance on that?
You might have changed the oil in it or they're not going to warrant it if the park's not theoretically open and there's nobody there.
Well, there may not be any. But they're going to say correctly, some things are warranty and some things are maintenance. And if nobody's doing maintenance, it's not our job to go out there and do it because it's not a warranty problem. Their warranty is that sidewalk cracks or the road.
Or the sod, the trees die.
Or the trees die. And trees don't die because somebody didn't maintain a tree. I mean, if a tree dies, it dies. And we say, hey, come, but the grass is going to grow and the weeds are going to grow around the trees and those are the different things. But there may be some items that you're right about, but there's some things that will get undone that aren't warranty.
But I think it doesn't need to be done in the end to do...
Yeah, Gene, you made a good point, get a winter. You know, these next two weeks for maintenance and preparation for winter are pretty critical. I think we might make a critical mistake here to push something into December to I, I think we might make a critical mistake here to push something into December to put down pre-emergence and all this other stuff, that they may not be able to do it.
They've already done Going to do it. In fact, there's a maintenance table that shows the visits per month related to the Bermuda account, mowing, everything they do relative to this contract. For example, in the, in the course of the year from January to December, they mow it 38 times. And it tells you how many times each month they go out there and do it, why they do edging, when they do all of these things. And this shows each service that they're providing.
I think that we've got such a big investment here, I think to not do this is a terrible mistake. To not do it fast.
If we have, if we have responsibility for the park and their warranty has started and we do no maintenance for three months, we are exposed to them coming if something is wrong to that park and saying to us, that's a maintenance issue, that's not a warranty issue. And that's why you've got to have the two of them coincide. And that's also why we recommend Problem. It's not the city's problem, it's the
This is a simple analysis. We all have bought new cars and you get a warranty. You don't change that oil, the warranty's over. That's maintenance.
That's assuming you're running that car too, I guess, isn't it? If you're not running the car, then oil going to be pretty clean when you crank it up.
That is, but they'll say it's either three months or, it's three months or whatever miles. They'll say for three months.
I mean, it's not, you know, it's up, it's up to the council, certainly, it's not on the agenda, but I mean
Do you want to, do you want to vote? Do we want to vote? Do we want to vote and vote together? You almost have to do
Question, is it an emergency?
No, I don't, I, I think you could wait
I'm not, I'm in favor of approving this contract and when we accept the park. My question was, can that happen in two weeks to the voting session?
But tonight, tonight we need that, what's that certificate that I, no, I will tell you, Bill Echols is having a fit over there. Get that. And he's been, he's been all over Joby. Joby's been very nice about it, but he's been all over Joby. And I, I just don't see why it hasn't circulated, we were ready to hand it to him. The park is ready, it's ready to be done.
Well, so I don't see someone's drugs.
And do it.
Probably not a really council decision. It's just acknowledging that it's done. The architects told us it had, it's really a
No, but I think, but I think Glenn makes a good point, we really need to have that maintenance contract in place.
I actually don't see how the city got a decision in that because they were the contractors for the county.
I think that's right. That's what I think.
So really, we're signing with the county, not the contract?
That's pretty much it.
I agree with
But on the other hand, on the other hand, we're, we're taking, we're taking responsibility without having any maintenance in place. I don't want that risk to the city. So the two of them should coincide. Now, whether we wait two weeks to vote on acceptance of the park and coincide that with the, the maintenance proposal, that's a, that's a council decision.
Can I call, can I call a question and we'll start talking?
I guess you got to have motion first.
I'll make a motion that we accept the park and we have a single source as recommended by city, city manager for maintenance of that park.
And that's contract to begin December the first, is that not correct?
Whenever, whenever it begins.
The contract?
Yeah.
Which is, that day.
I don't believe that's what this said, but that would make it
Whatever it is, did we get a second? No, no, I just made the motion, did we get a second?
Second.
Fair motion, second. Any other questions? If not, it was a favor, six to five to say aye.
Aye.
Oath no. All members voting for the motion. All right, next
That depends on you, man.
It's okay, well, maybe you just go ahead and do it. It's about that oil change. Make them change your oil before
I believe it's a 2008 truck that has, or seven truck that is being utilized by reservoir personnel that are employees of Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. We have provided the truck, we split the maintenance and operating costs according to the agreement on a 75-25 split with the city paying 25 percent. The truck is titled in the Zero book value on our books. They would reverse the billing. Currently, we have two-way billing. They bill us for certain things that is our portion and we now bill them for the truck. This would just be billed back for 25 percent of the maintenance to us, so
Mr. West? It's not a zero assets, it's a liability. Let's give it a
That's true.
It's insurance, all the other crap. I mean, if it's driven by them and we own it, we don't want it.
Right.
Give it, let's go. Make a motion, we pass this, we, we give this title to
We got a motion and we transfer that F-150 to Cobb Marietta Water Authority.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'm waiting for the second.
And Don, it was a favor, six to five to say aye.
Aye.
Oath no. All members voting for the motion. Item H, Mr. Goodwin wanted to discuss the allowing the Optimus Club, I believe, to utilize the sound system and stage for the Christmas parade here in downtown Canton.
I handed out the statement that I talked to Mr. Butch Lawson about, when the Optimus Club, we've allowed them to, actually, sorry, about 27 years ago, when the city of Canton asked the Optimus Club to put them on the Christmas parade for us, it's one of our largest parades. They do And, you know, his question to us is that, you know, they are a civic organization, they are giving back to the citizens, they're doing this on our behalf, and he wanted to know if we could forego the cost of the stage rental and the sound system. And we talked about this when we put this program in originally, that if like thing to do. I don't see us charging them for that, but that's what
They should be aware of the damage.
And we, we should have a damage deposit. I mean, that seems fair.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but, you know, I don't think we should charge them to put on our parade.
Do, do they make money on this, Jack? Do they actually generate revenues?
I don't think they make any money off the parade themselves.
And whatever they do make as an organization, their church, their Bible, what we see, they give the money back.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you all probably think the Christmas parade is large, very huge.
Well, if we didn't have them during the Christmas parade, do we have an alternative? I don't think
Not, not
We wouldn't have a parade.
We wouldn't have a parade. And this, we're getting close to that time, so they need to know.
Time to, yeah. Would any, I'm not going to do that, but do we, let's go.
Anyone else? Comments?
I, I make a
Well, they like to know as quickly as they possibly can.
They can get it.
What about I take away?
Okay.
Just tell them we're going to do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
City manager report item one.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
I just want to read a letter that we got from Key Risk. They came out here and conducted a workman's compensation training session and they sent me a letter that says, been a pleasure working with Ms. Waters as she is incredibly knowledgeable with workers' compensation and safety and understands the importance of ensuring a safe work environment for all employees. She assisted with arranging the training for your staff and was very involved with the process. Also, we conducted a physical safety survey of the public works maintenance shop with Mr. Joby and your west. There were no safety deficiencies noted during our survey. Furthermore, this may have been the cleanest shop I have ever surveyed during my tenure with Key Risk Insurance Company and during my plus 25 years plus in the safety industry. So
There you go. I completely understand. Absolutely. Okay, one other item under council, under used items, Mr. Graham wanted to give us an update on the fire services committee meeting forthcoming.
Yeah, as you guys know, we, in our October work session, we asked you to Of course, the entire council and city manager and Chief Lloyd and everybody to this meeting. We want everyone's input. There were some, Jerry Cooper's actually had surgery, some question that he would, he would be up for, and I think his doctors, I think as of today, released him and included him for this meeting, so it is on for the 13th The room, it's a big room, so if people do attend, they can there. So very casual, mutual setting for this general discussion of operational alternatives for mutual benefit to the city and county of the Canton Northwest Fire Station. So that is set and we'll send out details for that, but I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, so.
Who's, it's going to be our council and mayor and fire chief, yes?
Yes, and commissioners, I think as of today, it's the five commissioners and their fire chief, Jerry now is up today, so.
Do we, do we need We, because it's meeting of elected officials and everything, we must make that a public meeting, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. We have to stay out of the bar until the meeting is over, okay? I'm going to get there. So save your seat. I'll save your seat. I will. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'm going to hand a motion to adjourn. Second is a favor?
Aye.
Okay.